And Councilmember Sharkey joined me in the event. There's a couple of other things that I attended here, or I will attend as well. Last week, we had the Ventura County Council of Governments meet, and there were a couple of speakers that came in to present information. One is David Mullenax, who represents us with the Chatham Counties League at California Cities. And so he's telling us a little bit about what was going on, what kind of bills they're tracking, of course, whatever the Department of Finance is doing, again, with the restructuring and dissolution of RDA and some trailer bills, they're taking a look at that. There's an Assembly Bill, AB 838, that's regarding sober living facilities, and the facilities have actually impacted quite a bit of communities throughout California, so they're trying to track that to see if there would be some elements within that bill that would not necessarily restrict, but it seems to be that some communities, wherever one has landed, many others then join in that community, and it really impacts it heavily. They're not necessarily spread out evenly throughout communities and all, but they're very highly concentrated, and so that was one of the issues. So they're tracking that for us. In terms of economic development, of course, they always have that on the radar. And then one other item that has come up that the league is taking a close look at, and that's the legalization of marijuana. And so they were finding that it could possibly then be on the ballot for 2016. They're just trying to prepare the communities for that kind of discussion. And Assembly Bill 266, AB 266, hopefully will set some of the regulatory framework for this, but that's something that they're taking a look at. The next Chatham Counties League meeting is this Friday in Santa Maria, and so I'll be attending that, representing the city. And then at the same B cog meeting, we had a gentleman present from Telecom Law Firm with regards to wireless sighting update, and there's some really very large changes coming down the pike. Back in the day, in 1996, I was actually involved with a wireless company, and in that day, there was a very large act called the Telecommunications Act of 1996 that set the stage for multiple players, for how the build-out was going to happen, what the communities actually had to do to respond to this burgeoning wireless business. Everybody wanted to carry a cellphone. That was even predating then some of the data that we're seeing now, and text messaging, too. Ninety-six was really kind of a watershed year. And there are some new rules that actually plan to the efforts of buildings and cell sighting towers and the changes that communities can restrict and cannot restrict, and a lot of it is we cannot restrict. And so there are some limitations to, like, say, a tower, or if there is a tower that was put onto a building and the tower acts like a wireless station, a tower, a cell tower, but the whole building is something else, well, then the changes actually affect the entire building. And some of those changes could affect even limitations in terms of height with cities. And so it was a really very comprehensive but quick presentation, and all they were telling the communities is to make sure that you have something in place. You know, we can't, there's no longer a moratoria that communities can put together. There have been challenges filed in terms of court, in the courts, with regards to these changes for telecommunications. But they're just saying, you know, they're telling the communities, "Come up with a model ordinance, follow maybe what are some of the best practices." And the City of Camarillo then reported that they had to put together an ordinance for their use, and that was something that they're currently taking a look at. So lots of changes afoot, and that was my report. Okay. So we move on then to open forum, item number 10 on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time. I do have one speaker card, and that is from Tracy Sisson Phillips with my Navy Chamber. So welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having staff that are willing to try something new and go above and beyond. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to work with the maintenance crew again on another volunteer portion of the Butler Springs Creek Cleanup. And after spending eight hours in the creek with Omar and Antonio, I greatly appreciate all their efforts as paid staff, but also an opportunity to give back and clear out another section of our creek. We worked behind Clara and Fifth, in that little section behind the Butler Springs Villas, and then down off Waynini Road. Hopefully, we will have one more final creek cleanup day this, beginning of this year to finish the last little section, about 50 yards, just before the footbridge in Miranda Park area. As far as the chamber goes, we do have some upcoming events that are of particular note. March 24th, we have a one-year anniversary mixer celebrating our member Rico's Italian Villa. We also have on the next morning, our next Chamber Networking Education Breakfast, and look forward to seeing everyone there. Of particular note is our upcoming food truck event, which we are diligently working with city staff on making sure everything is in place to move forward, and I'm happy to report and also thank council and staff for the help that they provided in working with the owner of Surfside Seafood. I received a phone call today from his son on how excited they are now to be working with us and partnering on some social media marketing efforts that we didn't get the opportunity to partner with on last year. One area of potential help that I would be looking to work with city staff on is with banner placement throughout the city. I've been notified by Naval Base Ventura County that they will no longer be allowing organizations to put up banners promoting events on their fence line. They will be restricting that solely for public service announcements and for their own internal base events. So that then poses a challenge for some of the events that I know the city will be putting on, and that the chamber looks to continue to put on as far as high-visibility marketing efforts.
And I think that does it for the chamber right now. Okay? Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. All right. So we move on then to item number 11, closed session. Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor and Council, there are three items on closed session this evening. One is labor negotiations with the Service Employees International Union, Portwood County Police Association. The second is existing litigation related to the Oxford Harbor District, and finally is an item related to initiation of litigation. Thank you.
Okay. And do we expect a report out of the closed session?
I think that's unlikely.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So with that then, saying that there's nothing else on the agenda, we adjourn then to the next regular meeting, to be held April 6, 2015, at 6:30 here in council chambers, preceded by pre-agenda at 6:15. Thank you. Peened order. Please rise to have the flag salute, followed by the inspiration by Councilmember Hensley.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in Christ, with liberty and justice for all. Shall I sit down?
Interesting thing, I went to a meeting recently, and it was explained about exponential abilities and the progress of technology. Two fellows went on to play golf. One was rather new, but the other guy said, "Well, we'll just play for nothing." And the new guy said, "Just to keep me on my toes, let's play a penny of a course each round." So, okay. So they get to the first hole. The guy says, "You know, you wanted to bet a penny, why don't we double it each time?" So they get through the holes until they get to the ninth hole, and the guy ends up owing him about $3 or $4. They get to the clubhouse, and they come back out, and by the time the 18th hole, guess how much that money is? It's almost $3,000. And that's how our technology is advancing, our telephones and everything else. A little start, and then before it blossoms and it grows and grows. So everybody be aware for all kinds of new changes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Fay?
Here.
Councilmember Hensley?
Here.
Councilmember Sharkey is absent. Mayor Potembrace?
Here.
Mayor Schott? Here. And with Councilmember Sharkey having an excused absence, we move on then to the agenda, item number four.
Yes, is this, can you hear me?
Yes.
Is this on? There we go. I move to approve the agenda.
Sir, second.
Second.
Okay. Any opposed?
Are we still only presenting agenda?
We're on four, Jim.
Okay. Okay. I'm just asking for the agenda here.
No, we're on item number four. So is there any discussion without objection? Is there any objection? Without objection, motion carries. Item number five, public hearing.
Yes, I do need to start quickly there. In keeping with the council's desire to promote public events at Waynini Beach Park, you have two special needs permits considered in your packet. The first special needs permit is for the Beaches Back Event that's planned for Saturday, May 23rd, sponsored by the city's Recreation and Community Services Department. The second special needs permit is for a Summer Solstice Car Show that's proposed on June 28th, and that's sponsored by Subaru of North America. As outlined in your report, the Beaches Back Event will occur in lot, the pier parking lot, and includes live entertainment, food booths, beverages, a beach thing, kind of a woody car show, I've been told, and then some children's activities. The event was designed by Recreation to celebrate the restoration of fishing here in the beach, you know, following shoreline erosion over the past year, so we're excited about that. The Summer Solstice Car Show will, that's proposed in Beach Lot B, which is just right next door to the east, and that will involve displaying new models, off-road, and custom Subaru vehicles, followed by dealership displays, support brand displays, some vendors and other activities for visitors to the car show. This was an unsolicited offer by Subaru. They approached staff. They've had six prior events from Santa Barbara down to San Diego. If they're familiar with the Beach Park, they thought this would be a great location for their seventh solstice event. The Subaru promoter has agreed to handle all aspects of this event, all logistics, including its own security, its event staffing, portable restrooms, and the heavy need to pay for 500 parking spaces at half the daily rate. For the Beaches Back Event, Recreation Staff is seeking free permits from council and parking, and they propose to produce this event with $15,000 remaining in the community events budget for this fiscal year. Both events are free and open to the public. The special needs permits in your packet propose standard special needs permit conditions that you've seen in the past. Special needs permits also make the necessary coast line findings, this is an appealable area of the coastal zone, and also the sequel exemption findings that are necessary. Our recommendation quickly is for council to adopt a resolution in the packet that approves special needs permit number 1-15 for the Beaches Back Event, the city's event, and then special needs permit number 215 for the Subaru Summer Solstice Car Show. I have the director here from Recreation Community Services, if you have any questions on the Beaches Back Event. The Subaru called late today and passes on their apologies, but they had a conflict, so you may get, if you have any specific questions on the long-term arrangements for you.
Okay. Thank you. Does the council have any questions for staff? Mayor Potembrace?
Come in.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate staff working so hard and diligently. I know that, you know, we've got our sand back on our beach finally, and the pier open, and that's only been one a month, since the pier opened, something like that? Yeah, six, eight weeks? And already staff, as directed by city council, has two events scheduled for the beach already. And the weather sure supports it, so I hope that the community all comes out and enjoys these activities, and I think staff is continuing to work on even more activities down at the beach. We invite everyone to come down to Waynini Beach and enjoy the fun. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
No? Okay. So Mr. Brown, with Subaru, do they go to different cities each year, or is there an opportunity for them to kind of stage this here year, what, have they indicated any of that to you?
Well, they haven't ruled out returning, but they like to move the event around. This will be the seventh annual, so they've had one in Santa Barbara, San Diego, Long Beach, Palos Verdes, in various locations. It's primarily for the Southern California marketplace. Apparently, there's a fairly healthy Subaru enthusiast crowd in Southern California.
Sure. Subaru owners are very loyal.
Loyal?
But no, my sense is they want to move that around, but they would be open to returning to Waynini Beach sometime in the future.
So we're pretty fortunate then for them to pick us to hold the event here.
You know, it was unsolicited. They just called me and indicated on Google Earth, they were just looking at the area, and then some of the folks are familiar with Waynini Beach Park, because you have basically the public parking amenities there, it's ideal for a car show kind of activity. Fairly low-key, rolling stock in and out, not a lot of impacts to the community. There's no light music or, in fact, they're not proposing to host even the hospitality of relying on either Surfside Seafood, or if the city is able to inspire a 3C corporation, they can partner with them for beverages and food.
Okay. Yes, Mayor Potembrace?
Well, I've attended the MG Car Show over at Ventura Harbor. They've had that for a couple of times, with the antique MG cars, and it seems to be very well-attended. I mean, the word gets out that, you know, through the, through the clubs, and usually it's pretty well-attended. I'm excited about having this at our beach. I hope that we sometime this summer can have a couple of the car clubs do a car show in front of the snack bar. I think that would help the business there, and be a good draw, another good draw at our beach. So I don't know if staff plans to listen to that, but I'd like to see that occur. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishes to address the council on this matter, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, without objection, we will close then the public hearing, and we have before us a recommendation to adopt Resolution 4108, and I'll entertain a motion.
My motion is out.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Is there any objection? Without objection, then motion carries, and congratulations, Mr. Brown and the city. Thank you. So we move on to item number six, consent agenda.
Do you have a consent agenda?
That's 0 for 6C. Okay. So we have a speaker card for item 6C, and just making everybody aware that you can speak on anything on the agenda, including consent, or anything not on the agenda. So at this time, I'll turn up Mr. Gordon's phone, and you have three minutes here.
As most of you know, I live in Waynini Bay. I am a senior, and we cater to that population. Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Potem, and the rest of the council members, I hope that you do approve the recommended speed limit changes because, again, for seniors who have a little more difficulty maneuvering across streets and being in the way, it's important to do that. I have an issue, however. You do have bike paths and certain streets, which is good. The one that, on the west side of Ventura Road, only goes for part of the area, there's no line along the side, along the border of the naval base. As a biker, I would appreciate consideration for that to happen, but the most important thing is that somehow education be carried out for drivers to be careful when they make right turns across bike paths. For a biker, it can be really dangerous when they don't look or pay any attention and just turn right in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay. So we have the cons-
Mayor, may I comment?
Sure. Mayor Potembrace?
Gordon, my daughter flunked when she got, went to take her driving test at the DMV, they flunked her twice for not turning and looking down the bike lane as she made a right-hand turn across the bike lane. So the DMV considers it important. Apparently, there's quite a few wrecks we're going to have. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay. So moving on through, we have the consent agenda in front of us.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Are there any objections? Without objection, then motion carries, and consent agenda is approved. We move on then to item number seven, Chief of Police, Chief Gager.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Five months ago, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the school district to fund the crossing guard program, and the contract with All Cities Management Services is administered by the police department, and to date, it's been running flawlessly. As most of you know, All City Management has been running Ventura Police Department's crossing guard program for over 10 years now, and they, too, have had no issues with their services. All Cities Management is the only contract services in Ventura County for crossing guards, and it's clear that they run a professional service, as we received no citizen complaints since they took over. The contract crossing guards are now currently controlling the intersections at Ventura Road and Clara Street, Ventura Road and Pleasant Valley Road, Ventura Road at Florence Avenue, and as well as the Bard Road at Sixth Street. The impact of general fund will still not exceed the original $32,500 agreed upon by both the city and the Waynini School District. I'm here tonight to recommend that the council authorize the city manager to continue the memorandum of understanding with the school district and allow her to enter into another year's contract with the All Cities Management Service Company to provide crossing guards for the 2015 and 2016 school year. Open to any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Gager. There are any questions?
No questions.
Comment?
Comment. I want to compliment the chief. I know that last year was difficult to get to this point. I also understand our city manager deserves kudos as well. I received that information back from the school district, so the two of you together, good job. I'd like to make a motion, but I know that others might want to speak. But whatever the motion is, and I'm doubtful it'll be a negative motion, I'd like to include with that as a letter to the school district to thank them for being a partner with the city.
I second that motion.
So hold on just a second.
Well, I know that others may want to speak.
Thank you. Yes. Are there any other comments or questions about this? No? Okay. Did you have a comment, Jim, for this?
I second his motion.
Okay. So, just a second. You know, the mayor also has to speak, Jim.
I believe we should give some commendation to the police chief and to the Oxford, I mean, the Waynini School District. I think it's important, so I appreciate that.
If I might amend that, it should be the city manager as well.
I'm sorry, the city manager as well?
All right. So Chief Gager, I applaud you for putting this together and helping us then handle this contract, as well as providing the safety at those very important crossings for kids in the community. So thank you for your efforts on this, because this was something new, I guess. I chartered waters when we got to this co-branded kind of project. Okay. So is there a motion then?
Oh, I thought I had.
Item seven?
I confused you.
No, because, well, we have to wait till if there's any other questions, and of course, the mayor then gets the last word here on each of these items. So is there a motion?
Gee, do I have a choice?
Well, you do at this point.
I move to approve, and I would like, if we could, to have the mayor, under her signature, to express the council's appreciation to our partner, the school district.
I second the motion.
Okay. Is there any objection? Still without objection, then motion carries, and we'll fold them with water. Okay. Super. And so that's item number seven. Thank you, Chief. And then we are now at item number eight, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. At the February 2nd, 2015 meeting, the council directed that the building located at 590 East Pleasant Valley Road, which has been occupied by the Boys and Girls Club for approximately 45 years, that the, the action was that the city wanted to continue to have Boys and Girls Club utilize that building, and the motion was to, in effect, or my recollection was, the motion was to, I have to make that happen, and I pointed out the time I needed to look at what the options were, and I bring them back to you, and that's what I'm doing this evening. And as the staff report lays out, there are two options, or I guess at least two options. One is to grant a fee simple to the property to the Boys and Girls Club, which, well, the issue that I want to make clear to the council on that is that if you do that, it's not possible to keep the Boys and Girls Club from transferring that property to another entity in the future. And I'm not in any way suggesting they would, or have any information that they would, but I thought it was important that the council be aware that if you turn the property over in a fee simple to them, that they have the ability to transfer it, because California will not allow you to restrain alienation of property in that way, that you can say that the future owner of a property will always be X. Now, the city can put a restriction on the property that it can only be used for certain purposes, and that restraint is okay in the future. And there needs to be some, the word needs to be concise and clear, and there are a lot of cases that unfortunately come out of things 50, 90 years later, but in any event, it is possible to do this, to transfer it to the Boys and Girls Club, but they would have the ability potentially to transfer its, their ownership interest, or its ownership interest to another entity in the future. We can restrain the use. The other option, now, the positive of that is that the Boys and Girls Club wants to undertake some repairs or improvements of the building, they don't have to comply with public works bidding processes or pay prevailing wage. The other options for the council to enter into a long-term lease, the council can enter up to a 55-year term lease with the Boys and Girls Club, and that way, the city can control both the user and the use. The negative to that is that the, it would be public property, that repairs and maintenance would require public works bidding and prevailing wage. There are exceptions that are allowed for purposes of volunteer work if the labor code is followed, and so, again, I was all laying out the staff report pretty clearly, but for the public, can we state that those are the options that my office reviewed, and are just looking for direction from the councils, how we want to proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Are there any questions?
Yes. Mark, in my former life in redevelopment, whenever the agency was involved in acquisition, the grant deed was loaded up with all kinds of use restrictions. I don't recall if this property involved tax increment money in the original- I don't recall if this property involved tax increment money in the original purchase. Have you reviewed the grant deed to see the restrictions that are already imposed on the property?
No, I have not. There's not been a title report that has been ran on the property at this point in time. We did detail out in the staff report. My, well, it doesn't say it's not R and E money, it says the information that we see from the staff, this would be for city funds. Now, you know, if there was some transfer of title, one of the things that's done at that point in time is to do preliminary title report, one is not done at this point in time. Now, we did point out that the property would, at least for the first five years, regardless whether it's leased or it is granted in fee, that there are some CDBD funds involved, and those restrictions about use will have to be adhered to during that time period.
The reason I raise that question is that if in fact it did involve redevelopment monies and those restrictions are on the grant deed, they remain in perpetuity. And the further reason I raise that question is I was surprised at your analysis that there's such hesitation to impose additional covenants as part of a transaction involving fee interest in property. The covenants that the agency had to impose each time that acquired property were very onerous, and so I'm surprised that you suggested that there may be a problem in crafting language that would relate to this very transaction, that is, allowing the use of the facility and ownership by the Boys and Girls Club as long as it is used for that purpose, and whether it's the ownership as it is today or some point in the future, I'm just surprised at your analysis because of how redevelopment operates and the obligations that accompany any acquisition of property.
Yes, I'm aware of dispositional development agreements, and generally, they have great, the uses that are allowed under those are generally restrained because the agency is invested in the property, and generally, the transfers of property are not completely prohibited, but they are in some cases for a period of years. They are limited to certain qualifying entities, if you will, so certain restraints are okay, but if the city wants to just turn over fee simple interest to the Boys and Girls Club in perpetuity, again, then we can put, we can put use, we can put use restrictions on, but not user restriction. And I think probably just the difference would be from my redevelopment experiences, usually the properties, there might be restraints that go on for a number of years, but they normally weren't in perpetuity.
Well, unless my colleagues had a different feel for them or the Boys and Girls Club, I still endorse the idea of a conveyance of the property for one dollar, as I recall, and I'm certain that there could be language restrictive covenants that could be crafted that everybody be comfortable with, so unless there's a change in belief that there's a better advantage to going to a long-term lease, I certainly am more favorable toward a fee transfer.
Okay, yes, Mayor Portem, please.
Yeah, Mr. Hensley, the, Mr. Hensley, the restrictions relative to the CDBD requirements, you said that they would have to do at the time, would those be, if the property was transferred, grant fee simple, would those restrictions be included in the, in the deed?
Yes. They're the run for about five years.
Okay. Do we have a general idea what they are?
That fifty-one percent of the youth have to come from low-income families that are being served by the property.
And I concur with Councilmember Fig, I'd like to see the property transferred through the brand with the restrictions that the property shall be used solely for the Boys and Girls Club purposes, and I'd also like to pursue, if you think it's appropriate, a separate agreement with the Boys and Girls Club, that if they ever cease to use the building for Boys and Girls Club purposes, then they will return it to the city. I don't know if that's possible, but-
I think that's what I addressed in the, in the staff report, is that if you're going to turn it over for a dollar, that you can restrict the use, and we could say that, for instance, that the use has to be serving youth and providing after-school recreation programs and academic programs that serve low and moderate income families, we can do all the things, restrict the uses to what the Boys and Girls Club is currently doing, but we can't say the Boys and Girls Club will forever, that's not a restriction, but I believe is enforceable, but we can restrict what goes on in the property.
Okay. So if the Boys and Girls Club went out of business, but another youth service organization came in, the Boys and Girls Club can give it to that youth service organization as long as they use it for the same purposes?
Correct.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so are there any other questions? Because we do have speaker cards, I don't want she gets to do a motion yet. So I have two speaker cards for this item, and I'll first call up Mr. Anthony Valante.
Madam Mayor, could I move after Chair?
Sure, so let's call up Richard Duarte, both of you have three minutes.
I'm Chair, Members of the Council. It's my pleasure to come in before you this evening. My name is Richard Duarte, and I reside at twenty-nine forty-one Leewood Way in Oxnard, and I am the Chair of the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club of Oxnard and Port Winnie. On behalf of our Board of Directors, we wanted to thank the council for their generous consideration at your February second council meeting regarding the transference of the property to continue to serve the families and children of Port Winnie. Based on that action, we have met with city staff to begin our assessment of what is needed to be done to resume service as quickly as possible. We were all impressed with the work that has been completed. It's really impressive in terms of what has already been accomplished. We've also begun meeting with, to develop a plan to secure funding sources, to have an ongoing maintenance program for the club in the future. We have noted the issues in the staff report regarding the transfer option, and we wanted to assure the council that we would be prepared entering to any agreement, any condition or any covenant that would provide assurance to the council that if our club for any reason were to discontinue our service, our status service as it was in Girls Club, that the property would revert to the wishes of the state, whether it be for another recognition purpose or whatever. We currently have two properties that have very similar agreements with the city of Oxnard, and we have been in one of those facilities for sixty years. Once again, we wanted to thank the council and assure you that our mission remains the same, that we are dedicated to serve the youth of this community, especially those that need us the most, and that we will continue to provide the highest level and quality of program.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gordon. And Mr. Valante, would you wish to speak?
Madam Mayor, Mayor Portem, Councilmembers, City Managers, City Attorney, my name is Anthony Valante, I live at twenty-five thirty-four Ocean Miss Court in Port Winnie. My only purpose up here tonight, and that's why I wanted Chair, you know, to say what we are doing, is to say thank you, and it's going to be a benefit to the kids and the families here in Port Winnie. I personally can't thank you, Mayor Portem, for the recommendation that you made, and I've got to tell you, it has so far made it easy for us. We're looking at a capital campaign, and we've already talked to a few people. Knowing that the building is ours, providing that you approve that, it is easy now, seemingly, to get the monies, whether it's five hundred thousand, you know, upward to that, so we're looking at a close to a million-dollar capital, and that's for the inside, that you've done a great job on the exterior. Now we're looking at the interior, and I think it's going to be really great. You're going to have a fine building after we get finished inside, and outside looks great, so thank you again to staff. I know that you've done so much work on this. I'm a little bit more at ease tonight than I was in February, so thank you. I really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. So anyone else that wishes to speak, because I only have two speaker cards? Okay. So, Mr. Hensley, with the, when we did take a look at this last month, it was where city council wanted really a clawback measure that said, you know, if the Boys and Girls Club wasn't using that building appropriately, that there would be a way to, for the city to bring the building back in, and so my feeling is that with staff recommendations, the only way we could do that is if it was a lease agreement.
If you want to control the user indefinitely, yes. If you want to control the use, that can be done through the fee simple, so an example of it being another nonprofit that serves disadvantaged youth for athletic or for academic and after-school activities, that restriction could be in place, but not for the user.
Right, just for the use.
Not in perpetuity.
Just the use of the building, right. Okay. Okay. So is there a motion then?
I'll make that motion. The direction, I think, is what you're seeking here, the preference being for a fee title transfer with appropriate covenants.
I second.
And that would include your motion, Councilmember Fig would include then the details that Mr. Hensley has just provided right now with the details of the use of the building?
Yes, and I would certainly expect that there'd be communication, further communication between the parties to make certain that they are agreeable.
Okay, so is there a second then? Is that a second? Have you? Okay. So any objection?
None.
All right. So you know what, let's go ahead and have a vote then. Thank you. Councilmember Fig?
Yes.
Councilmember Hensley?
Hoo-ya, yes.
Councilmember Sharpies absent. Mayor Portem Breeze?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharp?
Yes.
Okay. So with that then, the motion carries, and we'll go through the rest of the details that we need. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. All right, so we move on then to item number nine, Councilmember Reports, Comments, and Requests for Future Agenda Items. This is one of those things that we talked about at the, at the strategic plan meeting that we had last month, so are there any comments? So Councilmember Fig?
Yes, I understand that we may be expecting the results of that strategic planning session the first meeting in April. Is that correct?
I'm just about reviewed, I've just about finished review of the draft, so yes, that's my, that's my take.
And my thinking here is, you're trying at this point to provide some sort of a dollar estimate or range as to what each of these initiatives may entail. Correct me if I'm wrong, and where I'm going with this is one of the items that I don't think we had a handle on was the desire to entertain streamlining or video recording of council meetings and other public events that are sponsored by the city, and as I recall, there wasn't really a dollar figure established at this point in time for that kind of programming, and I'm wondering if it would be of value if we were to request KDTV to work with you in offering some ideas so that when we do take this up in April, we'll have a better fix on what the choices are and what the financial ramifications might be.
So we didn't get that specific, as I recall, in, at the strategic planning session. The purpose for bringing the report back primarily will be to make sure that it captures everything that you all were looking for. Some items, we may be able to give you an estimate. In some cases, the process may look different, you know, certain things, I'm not in particular talking about that, but there may be certain new things that we would want to go do a request proposal, or we'd need at least a scope from the council to get an idea of exactly what you're looking for with that, so for example, just using what you've picked off, you know, there's live streaming, there's videotaping and then posting, so there's a number of different things, so it would be important at that meeting to get a better idea of exactly what the scope that we should be looking at would be, and then we would come back either RFP, bring you back additional information at a follow-up meeting. I don't think you got that far at the strategic planning session.
No, we didn't, and, you know, I'm a neophyte when it comes to technology like this and what our options might be, whether it could be interactive versus one-way communication, and that's what I'm trying to, you know, to help the council, help you, that there could be a menu of choices of how to structure a public outreach program that involves programming of this nature. If you think it's something that should be deferred until April, so be it, I'm just thinking that maybe you have several weeks' time here, that if we were able to engage KDTV in helping tell us what our options are, rather than us trying to figure out-
Absolutely, I guess what I'm saying is that I don't know that we'd go so far as to make a recommendation at that point, but yes, we'll definitely look at what the options are. And certainly work we've bought.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, or? Yes, Councilmember Hensley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Concurring with our, my esteemed colleague sitting next to me here, Mr. Fig, I think it's absolutely essential that we have more of an open public meeting, and that the public cannot make it are able to watch it at home. Technology, as I mentioned earlier, is expanding exponentially, and it's so much easier now, so I would suggest, number one, that we move forward to that with posthaste, but still with certain blinders on to make sure that we don't go too far over the side. My other comments. Miranda Park, I've met with Richard Rollings and Jack McGrath last month reviewing the park's decline. The tennis courts need to be repaired and new lighting installed. I spoke with Carmen Nichols, our deputy city clerk officer, and she expressed a positive attitude with the need for the restoration also. Means of bringing the park back up to standard, standards and working means of bringing income in from users. Establishing a committee of council persons and/or interested residents to start action on upgrades. Light, the lights, the field lights are in deplorable condition, they haven't been working for about two years, as I understand, is that correct? That needs to be repaired, the poles, I understand, are rusted and they need to be replaced, some of them, the wiring needs to be replaced. And in regards to some of this work, I spoke with Edison, and they have a new program for rebates for putting in LED, light emitting diodes, which can be brighter and more efficient, and in the process, it'll save us about sixty percent of our electrical cost at nighttime, so I think we'd better look towards that. Another issue that came up, the recent murder of a young resident on Monday, March the ninth, I believe, at the footbridge by Miranda Park. Mr. and Mrs. Ventner lived next door to it, within thirty feet of it. I met with them, and the lady was terrified. Just five shots rang out, her door was open, she didn't know what was happening, and her husband was teaching down in the valley. After meeting with them, a learning of the dilapidated conditions and the reduction to the police force patrols, forcing the reactive departments that of previous proactive department, needs to change, we need to be more proactive. Possible closing with suggestion of the parks at nighttime, because there's a lot of drug traffic and things coming on. These are, again, issues that can be brought up by Edison, and I'm thinking that maybe for the whole community, for our streetlights, we can look towards the Edison, but I'll be bringing more documentation for that. I'm also not seeing any advancement in regarding some of the issues like reviewing and updating the city's business license and enforcement. I think we need to get a hopping on that. Our request that we take action with a proposal to initiate the videotaping, which we already talked, and request also, as we brought up in the strategic planning, moving the public forum, not on the agenda items, up to the first thirty minutes of the meeting, anytime thereafter, each person would have thirty minutes, but thereafter- a person would have thirty minutes, but thereafter, the remainder would go to the end of the speaking. And again, echoing Councilman Fig here, I'm interested in when the final report of our February strategic planning session is going to be issued. Many issues are put forward, and at least we have to have some action or do something about it. Thank you so much.
Mayor Protem Breeze, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. This morning, I attended a event at Art Hickox Elementary School, just across our border, just on the other side of J Street, where the teacher of the second-grade class there was presented with an award. I'm sorry, do you remember her name?
Vicky Evans.
Vicky Evans, right. What a wonderful lady she is. Just an outstanding teacher. The, the care that she shows for her, for her students is just beyond reproach. I was very honored to, to be able to honor her. She was a wonderful choice for Teacher of the Month. I just wanted to mention that Councilmember Sharpie is in Washington, DC with RDP 21 in support of our local Navy base. Make sure that our Navy bases are receiving the support that they need from our legislature in, in Washington, DC. Also, this afternoon, we had a Portway Nimi Water Agency meeting. Our shortage of water continues. We had a dismal snowfall in the Sierras. Things are going to get worse before they get better. The Portway Nimi Water Agency, which consists of the city of Portway Nimi, the Channel Islands Beach Community Services District, and the two Navy bases, is working extremely hard to safeguard our water supply, and see if we can find new water to improve our water quality. But I'll tell you what, it's an uphill battle, and stand by for heavy rolls relative to water, because it's going to get a lot worse before it gets any better. Just to mention that a couple of months ago, we had to shut down our plant, our water treatment plant, because the water that was being delivered by United was sucking off the bottom of the wells, was full of so much crap that it plugged up our water plant. We had to shut it down. So, we're running out of water, folks. Keep that in mind. Again, we're working as hard as we can. When we, Metropolitan is threatening to impose significant penalties for water use. And I know that the city is, is looking at restructuring our, our water rates to help provide incentives to conserve water. I don't know where that's going to go, or how that, when that's going to happen, but it, we are looking at that. So, just a reminder, conserve water if you can. If you're going to do a landscaping project, use the, use the low-water stuff if you can. Thank you very much.
Okay. And I have just a few things here. So, you know, when you talk about water, I heard that Boston has had record snowfall this year. So, maybe they could chip a little bit of that snow this way. That would be nice. Last week, we had a planting of a sycamore tree, and, and planting this, then add flowers for Arbor Day. And the city of Portway Nimi has put in a bid to be a Tree City USA. We have over four thousand trees that we spend some general fund money on to take care of year after year, and have our community really look spectacular. And so, the sycamore tree actually replaced a tree that had died out. And so, with the help of the pre-K through fourth graders from across the street, Weynham Christian School, we were able then to put some of that, their efforts to good use here.
Outstanding.
And help us with, with some of the soil, as well as plant, some of the flowers that you see in the flower beds out front. So, that was held last year, or last week. And Mayor Protem Breeze?